I'm here, I'm with you.
Okay, it's five o'clock, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. Uh, we have a couple of members that aren't here, but they would just have to join us as we move along. Uh, first item is approval of the agenda. Is anything need changed by that time? Anybody got any close session? If not...
Need to add two.
Okay. Do we need F5 this, or do you already got... Okay, she's got it. She's got the close session information in hand, so we're good with that. So, can I get a motion?
So moves, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, have a motion of the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we have an agenda, and goes to minutes, and if you open that up, you'll see there's uh, let me see, I think there's two, or if I need to scroll down. Yep, the September 20th meeting, uh, meetings, uh, minutes are here, so hopefully you've had time to look over those.
We have approval.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recuse myself from the part of the first, then part of the meeting.
Got that Lisa? Okay. And I heard a second, did I hear a second over there?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to that? I think so, the meeting's minutes. And that'll take us into the no action portion of the meeting, and the first item up is Ms. Michelle Ors has a plan for us to see.
Thank you.
I guess you want us to open it, or we're gonna look at it behind us?
Um, it's just a, it's a graphic for, um, I'm going to mostly just speak about the, the new 2016 health action plan. Um, every several years since 2004-5, uh, we have come before you, the School Health Advisory Council, uh, has revised a health action plan, which is something that our state board policy requires that we maintain. And the graphic that's behind you, and, um, and I'm not certain that it was in your packet, but as of last year, the North Carolina Healthy Schools Initiative, which is a branch of the Department of Public Instruction, revised the original eight-component, uh, health action plan that we were required to maintain, and revised it to reflect this new model that has been promoted nationally by the, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. It's now a ten-component model of school health. The change, the changes, they have inserted a, one that is called social-emotional health, which is about crisis prevention, suicide prevention, bullying, things like that, and the family and community involvement has been split in two, so there's a separate community involvement and a separate family to give more weight to those components. So what we've done, what the, the, um, School Health Advisory Council, which, uh, is comprised of people from the community and the school district, that are experts in or, or are passionate about these various components. And last year, we met, uh, four times, which is the amount of times we're going to meet again this year. We had sort of a new model in which we met twice during the middle of the day to allow agency people to better participate, we fed them lunch, and then twice after school, from four to five, to allow a representative from each of our schools to attend. And between all of us, we've come up with this revised plan that you did have in your packet. So there were several things that were, there was one question that popped up, and then there were several things I'd like to just point out that we changed, and then you guys can ask questions if you wish. Um, the, uh, the first component, uh, and there's really no numerical order, but the first component we have here is health education, and the efforts to educate our students, um, about teen pregnancy, teen pregnancy prevention. Healthy Outcomes is the name of our program that we, uh, host in cooperation with Higher Heights, um, the Human Services, and we have many community partners that also help us in that effort. Um, the component two, physical education and physical activity, the goal three, uh, is reflective of a new law that was passed called the Gofeller-Waller Concussion Awareness Act. So we've added a lot of information in the component two, physical education and physical activity, and Mr. Joe Koch was very, very helpful in working that up as lo, as well as the school nurses. So that's a change, a very substantive change in fact, to reflect that new law. The, um, component three, health services, we've added goal four. We've tried for several years, have never succeeded, but we really are very determined to do some sort of a health assessment at our individual schools. And last year, the Action for Healthy Kids, um, Kate B. Reynolds and the North Carolina PTA involved us with Action for Healthy Kids, and their consultants came and met with us several times, and they are very, very willing to help walk us through a, sort of an employee wellness and school health assessment that is a, a modified version of the CDC Centers for Disease Control School Health Index. So that's in here, and we're, we really wish to make that a priority this year because we've tried on several occasions, and this looks like the best tool that we've seen yet. Um, component seven, the physical environment, we wish to thank Viden, uh, through their Community Benefits Grant, we now, we were able to purchase four additional AEDs. So all of our schools now have automatic defibrillators out on campus for use, not just for athletic programs, but also for teachers and community members that may come to events. Um, and these will be public access, like the sign, the public access AEDs that you see in places like shopping malls and such. So now all of our schools have this equipment, and like I say, Viden gave us a grant for, so that we can purchase some for elementary schools. Um, the new family engagement, component nine, we've broken that out a bit, and we are trying to emphasize more of that family engagement as would be consistent with, uh, this model, and also, uh, the Kate B. Reynolds Charitable Trust Healthy, um, Healthy Places Initiative. Then, uh, the number 10, brand-new component, social-emotional health, that has also mention of crisis protocols, response protocols, different sorts of things that might happen in our schools. Um, so you have seen this plan in, in, in most of its aspects since 2004-5, but we keep following the new legislation, we follow priorities, we remove things, for instance, the tobacco-free schools, we're not even talking about that anymore because we've accomplished that goal, all of our schools are tobacco-free. So as different things come, come through from the state and from the federal government, we add different components, take certain things away that have been accomplished. Do you have, do any of you have any questions regarding any of these various components or any of the strategies or goals that are in them?
I do.
Yes.
Um, mental health component.
Mm-hmm.
Who will ID, I know it's the staff, but do you have someone special, um, to do that as their...
Which page is that?
Which page is that?
Which page?
Oh, no.
Oh, I thought you were looking at this.
Would that be under component 10, under the social and emotional?
Well, it was before that happened, 'cause I wrote nine down for it.
Like, component six is counseling, psychological, and social services. That's nine, and then, um, or six, rather. Uh, 10 is the crisis protocol. Um, what sort of identification were you...
For mental health, is someone on staff that would do that? And I was just wondering.
I do know that we have school-based mental health services now through some of our community providers.
Barbara, do you mean the people at school who are gonna identify or refer the students? And that'll be done with teacher input, work with the school counselor administrators, with connection with somebody...
So staff, we know that it is part of their ongoing to...
To make that referral up, so that we make sure that services are received by students who need it.
And we provide the service if a school does not have a qualified person, we will provide them one for that.
Well, every school has guidance staff, and, and they do have a set of procedures whereby if a student seems to be in need of these greater services.
I'm sorry, component six.
Okay, let's see.
Establishment and employee, assistance program for employees.
Oh, the employee assistance program, you know, that is something actually that has been in here for a number of times, and we have not moved aggressively forward on that, but that is something that has been in our plan for a while. And the employee assistance program was something that Dr. Phipps also has expressed an interest in establishing, so...
And we, we've talked about that, that, because there are a number of employees at the county government level, and also with the school system, and possibly some others in the, in the county, that if we could work together and leverage resources, that we might be able to drive costs down, and that could be a wellness for physical health, it could be a counseling issue, it could be substance abuse, all of those wellness issues and assistance program is something that we, we sorely need. And I think Beaufort County had it years ago, but it became one of the victims of budget cuts, and it's something that we probably need to look at finding a way to bring back if we can.
Does anyone else have a question related to any of these components?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I finally found it on page 22.
Capital update, Mr. Hudson.
There's two atta, there's two attachments, but the first one just talks about Eastern, I think.
Correct. That's just the current. Fifteen, sixteen, update on the Eastern Elementary pod, one to three enclosure. Um, they have completed all installation and handstraps. I'm gonna go away from my little written text, 'cause it has actually changed today.
Yeah, just...
Um, they have completed all the rails, handrails, walkways, everything is in, emergency lights, corridor lights, um, everything's completed electrical, they're wiring up the, um, electric door operators today. They did get the door frame tore out today on the one behind the library, the first, the front one they took out last Wednesday and put the front door in, but the doors were one-eighth of an inch too wide. So they were luckily reordered, and the door manufacturer came through, and they're having the doors, doors delivered tomorrow. So their project is scheduled to be completed for final inspection Friday, depending on weather, but they, they're, they're looking forward to have it completely finished Friday.
Even the replacement glass?
Well, the two pieces of glass, that one came broke and one lay broke, so there's have plywood in there, so it's up and weather tight, so...
So that would still...
Probably do a little better than glass with the upcoming storms.
But, but, so that would still pass inspection even though that glass is in there as long as it's warm?
They would come back for a final, and they would replace it, we would hold off on our final payout, a payout, but, um, project went very well, and since then, also update, um, we have completed the handrails over to the EC, the, um, walk ramp and the EC rails, um, that was put in, and we, only thing we had to do was clean up the site in the morning before they get there, and haul off our debris, it looks very nice. Mr. Terry stopped by earlier today while I was there.
It does, the handrails are awesome.
Yeah, the handrails on the site on construction, the project was very, very nice and in a very timely manner.
It's amazing how that enclosure changes everything. Wouldn't it be nice if we could have that all the way across that campus? I mean, I know that's just wishful thinking right now, but, uh, it made a world of difference.
Very, very nice, and they have this, um, cleanup of the site work, they've got probably 90% of that done, they got time to roll out, they have some pallets to haul off, and the, um, Lowe's fumble bee or butterfly garden thing, that's currently going on too, so there's a little debris, debris inside that's from that project, which is a separate project from the enclosure project. So if you were to actually go on site, it looks like a little bit of mess in there, but it's actually from the butterfly garden, and we're gonna assist them in hauling the materials off.
Now, if we can keep those big trees at the front door from falling over during the hurricane, we'll be in good shape.
Don't even say that.
Well, I don't think they're still big enough to reach over to get the enclosure.
Do some damage though.
Any questions regarding that?
No, not on that.
One other note I have is a special note, we had our Gov. Deals Auction, it ended up last Tuesday, and we generated $10,633.05 off of our surplus. Um, they have about a 5% loss in people not paying final payout, we're, currently we're about 4,000 short, but I still got a, I just got a payout just a second ago, so somebody just paid for it, so, um, we may have some of the items we have to resell for next time that people do not come pick up, but, um, I think it was a very good and successful auction. Um, coordination between Gov. Deals and stuff, we need to get that coordinated, the pickups, a lot of time invested by Plan Ops and helping assist load and getting rid of the stuff, but it takes a lot of time on our part.
What was that figure again? Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
What was that figure again?
And some of that material or items have, have been there since Russ was hired, so they've been there a pretty good while. We had talked years ago, when Patrick was here, about what to do with proceeds, and my thought is that with the work that maintenance does, that we ought to give half the money, not give, but we ought to direct half the money that we earn into the general fund that maintenance has, and then the other could go into the general fund of the school system. And I think that's basically how we had the breakdown, is that okay? We continue to do that?
Aye. I don't have any problem with that. But if you do, speak up.
Well, we appreciate it, we'll speed it back in the school system, of course, but...
You're not gonna take a vacation on this?
The money's the money.
We'll get it back.
Exactly. The only question I had, and we actually talked about this afternoon, but we might just want to say it again, so that the rest of the board can hear, I already had my answer.
As far as the 16, 17 capital, we'll move to there. Um, we're, I'm currently, Russ and I have been working together, but I'm writing the final RFPs, there's seven of them, we're including under one RFP, the separate security projects, and that will be Bath Elementary, Eastern Elementary, John Small, Northeast, PS Jones, Southside, and Snowden. Um, Snowden, that's the enclosure, the glass enclosure with the doors, um, all those will be written under one RFP, 'cause they're all very similar, they'll be specked out by lengths and widths, um, that type of stuff, but we figured we could save a lot of money by bundling those together in one contractor bidding on them instead of each individual little job.
Right. And when are those bids gonna go out?
I hope to have them, whether depending, next week, go to Ms. Lisa where she can send them out. Um, I have most of it written up now, I had to wait for some terminology of what the actual aluminum strip and stuff were called, so I'd make sure I spec the right piece, and I finally got, found me somebody on the inside that would give me a little information on the proper terminology, so we could get apples for apples.
Okay.
Um, also, um, Russ is working on the Eastern Elementary intercom system, that's under state contract, he's working on getting that together, um, that's already pre-negotiated, um, state price, and he's trying to get that set up. Um, and that's all we're working on, on the safety side, the vacuum cleaners and the buffers, they're under state contract, we're currently getting POs for those. Um, the mini blinds is being put in by Plan Operations, we are buying those through Lowe's and installing them as we can get in the rooms. Um, the Eastern Elementary concrete pad, we're planning to pour it over the next, um, teacher's workday coming up, we're gonna pour half of it, with the way that thing's made, with all the posts, makes it kinda tough to pour it all at one time, so we're gonna...
Talking about where the benches are?
Yes, ma'am, where the benches are, that's one of the 16, 17 projects. Um, we're gonna pull fit, pour 15 foot of it, 70 foot wide, and then the next break, we'll have to pour the other 15 foot, 'cause we're doing that in-house. Um, Northeast Electrical and Northside Electrical in the lecture room and the computer room, both of those POs have been generated, they're gonna be done by Beaufort County School electricians. And then PS Jones Concrete, of course, will be another break later, far according that concrete will be done by us, and that's all I have on schedule at this time.
Stan, what about finishing up the projects from 15, 16?
Uh, I got that.
Not with a couple that are left?
Yeah, there's only a couple that's left, and I, I had it and left it, but, um...
Storm drains at Northeast and Snow...
Storm drain that snowed, and one of them we've, we fixed last week, the one behind the gym, we think we've got that one corrected and fixed, and hooked the drain line back up, and cleaned the ditch out some, um...
There were two canopies, one at Eastern and one at Chaco Winter, and then one at...
Chaco, Eastern Elementary, I've talked to Mr. Tyndall, and he's gonna come by and measure and, or re-measure over the walk, make sure we hadn't changed his measurements and get his materials ordered, and I think Mr. Randy's ordered his materials, um, to get that one done, so we talked last week, so, yeah, I got a nod back there.
Wait for after the storm.
Yeah, wait after the storm. But then the other jobs are the ones that we bid out, that we did not get bids on, or didn't reply to, so if we want to send them out again and see, some of them will be the second time we send them out.
The bard units, you have to wait for the...
Bard units, we, we're doing them in-house, and we will have to do them one at a time as we, as we're out of school, unless we have, some of our classes are able to move a classroom, we may be able to do some, um, coming up, but we've just been swamped with the end of the summer and...
How long does it take you to replace one?
We could do about one a day, by the time we take one out and put one back. And it depends on whether we can get to them, some of them we have to have a lift to get to, and some of them we're able to manhandle, so...
And you catch it on workdays or stuff?
Yeah, that's, that's our plan, to do them workdays and stuff, but we only have 12, 13 guys over there total, so we spread our love thin on workdays and getting concrete poured and doing other things, so...
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
I do. Stan, um, I was in a meeting the other day, and I'm understanding that there's a bad leak in the gym at the EdTech, they're putting a floor in there, I'm, I, I can't understand for the life of me, why would you put a floor in it with the gym, with the, a roof leaking? I mean, I don't...
Well, we didn't have roof leaks until currently, I mean, my problem we're having is students throwing rocks on the roof, busting the skylights.
Okay.
Our roof is covered with bricks and rocks that were not up there six months ago, and they're there now. So they're picking up the old debris off the old building that's been demoed, and the floors left, and throwing it on the roof, causing damage to the skylight.
Okay, and?
We're repairing them as they do it, but we just gotta...
That's what I wanted to hear.
Well, and I, I asked Stan to go, if he could, with the excavator, and tear that brick up and remove it, so that they don't have anything that they can throw.
Okay, good, that's how it's good.
So that should help solve that problem.
The other thing, the storm is coming, I don't know where, but it's coming.
Well, we...
But the other thing that I, I, I'm, I'm wondering, where are we with those, uh, that, those cafeteria doors?
We've come up with another idea to save us a lot of money and not have to tear out the other, and I've talked to Dr. Phipps about it, and he gave me the okay to proceed. We're gonna, the new doors, we can shorten the length of the doors and not move the frame, and still be under American Disability Act and the height requirements that's there, so we're planning to cut eight inches off the new doors. Um, I've talked to Beaufort County Arm Works, and he said he thought he could do it for us with no problem, we cut the bottom out of the new door, move it up eight inches, put it back, and then we've just put a new blocks down and new seal plate, and not tear out the awning and all the other construction work that's needed.
Okay.
Save a lot of money and make the project a whole lot's easier. Then we have to pour ramp inside and outside ramp, concrete transition, 80 inches, which would take eight foot to make it ADA compliant, out, so...
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
My question.
Your turn.
My question was, I was looking at the completed project at Washington High School, the Field House, and it appeared that there was $5,384.98 that was left. It's in the yellow on, um, I, I don't know if that goes back into general budget, but I'm just gonna put it out there, there were a lot of additional things that we, uh, that they actually cut, uh, to get it in under their budget and make it affordable. I, I don't really feel like that $5,384.98 should go back into our budget, we didn't really, we didn't really put the funds up, when you think about it, I mean, the Booster Club did their $100,000, and the county commissioners did theirs, and I, is it possible that that can go back to the Boosters, so they can finish buying the things they need? They didn't get to totally outfit it, I'm just putting it out there, does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Well, what was it, the budget coming from the county was $450,000, wasn't it?
That was the initial, and then I don't know if they...
That was the initial, and I was thinking that we had put in difference, we'd have to go back and check the minutes.
It's sake's $450,000 initial, but, yeah.
It was $450,000, it came from the county, I don't think they added any money to their budget. I mean, that might not change what you're saying.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know, I'm just...
But I'm just saying, I don't think that they...
But Athletic Club paid for the architect fees, didn't they?
Right.
They did everything else, yeah.
Yeah.
And outfitting, they outfitted it as far as their money would take them, and then they had to stop, 'cause they ran out of money.
I have no problem with Carolyn's request.
I have no idea what they, I mean, no problem with them using, do they have something else they need to be done?
Yeah, there's a lot that they just couldn't finish doing, and they went as far as they could, till they could raise more money this year, I'm just saying, I...
Yes, ma'am.
I'd rather see that request come to us under capital than putting money in, in the fund, like that, then...
Okay.
Which, which in the end would, would yield the same result, but...
Right, but it still needs to come as action items before us.
And, and I know they, um, am I right in saying they are gonna at some point get internet and all that stuff out there?
We'll get the price on that, but it's a lot more expensive than you would think it would be, but I consider that classroom and learning space, and we need to make sure that we're taking care of. That Mark looked at that, was it 20, $20,000?
That, and we just, we see another bid, that was 19, we're trying to get the third one to see.
So, yeah.
And it may be that we apply that to the difference, I'm just, um, I just, I saw that, I didn't realize there was an overage, I just didn't.
Was, you know, if, if somebody can just coordinate with them what, what it is they need, and then they get the request back to us, then we can look at it that way. Actually, I did, but I didn't know everybody had sent me a question, I, I think I forgot what mine was, and anyway.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm kidding about that. I know what it was. My question was, on the safety and security, we're not gonna get too deep into it right here, but as we start putting some of these projects together from the bids, are we gonna hear back what the plans are, how the plans are actually laid out per school to do? You know, we've walked through the schools, and we've said, hey, we're gonna put a wall here, we're gonna put a wall here, then you and I today talked about a school that we would do different.
That's why I want to present back to that one.
Right, are you gonna come back, with, are you and Russ together?
Before I do it, yes, sir, if I'm alter from anything that's, we've changed, I have a different proposal for Chaco Winter Middle School to save us a bunch of money.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot cheaper.
Make it a whole lot easier, or just, it makes the logistics better and everything, but I'll present that the, the next meeting.
That's all I was saying, just, it was great that you and I talked about it, but bring it back to them, so they can...
That's why I wanna get it planned out, where I could do a...
On the surface, it'd sound like a good idea, but...
Where they can see it, actual picture.
As long as it doesn't reduce the degree of safety.
It makes it work better and save county money.
But somebody else might have a better idea about doing it, if you hear it.
Yeah, a lot of pictures are.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's what I figured, I'd go to school and take some actual photos.
So that's just me.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, yeah, so just bring it all back to, to the next, well, I guess the next meeting you can do that.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, we'll let him go. Take care of us during the storm out in the schools.
Stan, will you make the air come on over there?
Right.
If not, if not, we'll have to get some good executive director's maintenance, if he can't turn the air on.
I'm gonna make, see if I, we can't...
Okay, that'll take us into our action, and first item up is a participation plan, and I think Ms. Lily and maybe Ms. Green, I mean, yeah, I think she's gonna come too, they're anxious to get this to us.
I'll start off with the background for this. Basically, what we're looking at tonight is our participation requirements by the state, and, um, our requirement is 95% participation rate on testing, so this goes back to our last year's testing at the end of the year. Um, we have subgroups that we have to meet that 95%, and we had one school in our district who did not meet 95% of testing, and that would be EdTech. Their overall subgroup met at 86% instead of 95, which can, makes them a third year in that area, which considers them a focus school. So with the focus school status and third year, they have to send another letter home, they sent one home two years ago, this other letter will state that they've continued down that path. The black subgroup participation rate was 86% and not met, and that is the second year, so that makes them fall within, um, a consistently low-performing school model, and with that, they have to come up with a plan, and submit the plan to DPI on how they're gonna turn around the attendance, um, for testing. And then, um, the third subgroup was economically disadvantaged students, and that came in at 89% tested, and that is the first year for that subgroup, so there's a letter that has to be sent home to all parents for that particular area.
Andrea, will you describe all the, it may not need to be described, the public may need it if our board doesn't, what participation means when we talk about that?
Mm-hmm. Um, all of the students who are in your, um, roster for testing, on the day of testing, you have to test at least 95% of them, and so if you have, um, students who just, they don't show up on testing days, or they don't come back on testing days, and you can't get them back for the makeups, then the, and they're considered absent, then that counts against you. It also means that, and it has nothing to do with absences, it also means that if they do not take Math 1 or English 2 by the 10th grade, then they've considered missing[1671.32] that participation. And it also means if they've not had Biology by 11th grade, then they've missed participation in that area. So it's not just attendance on the day of testing. Does that explain it a little bit more?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then I believe Ms. Betty Jane Green is gonna go over her plan that she's gonna submit.
Do we have this linked, please? Is this on here now?
As Andrea just mentioned, the participation is not just who is... No. Okay, did the wrong one. It's not just who is in place on the day of testing, it's also what students in which grade levels should be taking particular tests. So the first thing that we want to do is to make very sure that all of the students that are in each grade are placed in the proper courses. So in order to do that, the administration and the counselor, we've already gone through the students that were presently at the school in August, we will review the transcripts again in January, and each time we enroll a new student, we'll review the transcript to make sure that they're placed in the proper courses. Sometimes we do get students from other districts, we get students from other states, and we get students from other schools. Sometimes they've just been passed over, a lot of our students are transient and they're the ones that fall through the cracks. So we need to really hone in on what the students already have taken and what they need to be in in order to fulfill these federal requirements. All of our students will be enrolled in Math 1 prior to grade 11, and that's a federal requirement, and also all students will be enrolled in English 2 prior to grade 11.
Ms. Green, that first bullet also allows you to make sure you're monitoring progress of students in terms of credits attempted and the credits awarded and that type of thing.
Yes, and along that line, all students will be enrolled in Biology prior to grade 12. Promotion standards will be reviewed and followed. Some of our students come in with an accumulation of credits that may perhaps, at first glance, look like they need to be in, let's say, grade 10 or grade 11 or grade 12. However, they may not have taken those required courses. So that's another thing that we're going to do, is to make sure that the students know what it is they should be taking and what grade levels. Mr. Jackson is going to be meeting with students in small groups, giving them their transcripts, reviewing the transcripts with them so they understand what they should have, plus, again, we are going to be looking succinctly at what the students have and what they need to be successful. Our testing coordinator will conduct audits to determine missing test scores and codes. Because of the trans latency of some of our students, they're, if they have taken a course or if they have taken a test, it does not always show up in their historical marks or in their transcript. So we need to go back and look through the CUM folders that we have and really peruse them and make sure that what's in the CUM folder shows up in power schools. Written notice, noting, written testing notification to parents, we're gonna be sending that out at least two weeks prior to testing and again about a week prior to testing. The students will know when they're going to test, where they're going to test and with whom. We're going to use the telephone call system to make several phone calls home stating the test date and what test the student will be taking. School website would be used to post information, we'll also be posting the testing schedules on the bulletin boards within the school, so the students will have no excuses about knowing when they should be testing. One of the things that we also talked about was, as a faculty, we are committed to having our students participate in these. The faculty is speaking with the students regularly about the need for testing, they should be proud of being able to come in and take the test, and they're also talking about how it reflects on the school. One of the things that we're working on is making the students proud of their work. And this is something that is very easy for them to do, just show up for testing, and we can bring that 89% up to 95% very easily. Our faculty also are going to be contacting parents personally if a student does not come up, come to the testing site, and making arrangements personally to do a makeup. And some of us have actually said, well, we're just gonna go out and get the students, we'll go to their house and bring them in and we'll test. So do you have any questions?
I have one, and I, and I think I probably know the answer, but I just want clarification. So if you do get a student in that is not coming from one of our high schools...
Yes.
And they do not meet this criteria, and they assume they're coming in as an 11th grader, you will tell them upon their enrollment there...
Yes.
That they're now going to be a 10th grader or whatever, their lack of course taking will put them, is that correct?
We will do that.
It won't be a surprise to them at the end of the school year, oh, by the way, you're not an 11th grader.
Right. Yes, we will do that, as well as identify that with the parent, but we will make every effort that we can to make sure that if it's possible to, let's say the student comes in August, if it's possible to perhaps promote them in January, that we can do that. We don't want them to be held back just because wherever they came from did not have the same regulations that we do, but we'll make it known to them and do as much as we can to catch them up.
So there's that little bit of wiggle room, if they come in without those courses, if they take them in the first semester, then they can be considered an 11th grader.
That's correct.
And in some cases, you got a student that may come in from another school and they just missed the passing mark, and we can look at credit recovery.
Mm-hmm.
But the key is doing that before, a week before graduation, so we wanna make sure that we're doing these audits on a regular basis.
Right, good, good.
Well, if a student is coming in from another area, then the school that they went to would have done this because they only go to EdTech. Because of, lack of a better word, they got in trouble, and we know all of them did.
Well, about 75% of our students at EdTech are in the pathways program, so it's a dropout prevention program for students that have not made the kind of progress and success academically. But we do, we get, and it happens in Beaufort County, it happens in every other LEA as well, we'll get students and their bits and pieces that aren't connected on the transcript, and some of that may be their student left at the very end of the year or they left right before testing was completed. So you may have a student that missed a grade, a passing grade by one or two points, and the credit recovery program allows them to go in and be assessed in the areas of weakness in the core component areas that they need to be, and once they show that they're proficient at a certain level, then we're able to award that credit retroactively. So some students can pick up credit, but they have to earn it to be able to get that, but that only applies to students that are very close to the passing mark.
But what I'm trying, so there should be two, EdTech and the school itself should have told them the same information.
That's right, that's right. But we don't wanna assume that Beaufort County School or anybody else has done that, so, and even a student that comes in that's with us in their 10th grade year, we're gonna have these meetings several times during the 10th grade year, during the 11th grade year and 12th grade year, to make sure that progress is being made, but also that they've got the proper amount of courses, credits, because just because you get 22 or 23 credits, and if that's the state minimum, doesn't mean that you can graduate, because some of those credits have to be in certain areas, and we wanna make sure that all of that's nailed down and that we give folks ample opportunity to earn the kind of credits that are needed.
Other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Sounds good.
We need action on that plan.
Yeah, we do. Were you asking her to stay around?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we're gonna hear some more a little bit later.
Okay.
We would like to ask for you to approve the proposal that's being sent to DPI for testing requirements.
Most of the board's pleasure.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second, any last questions? Here and none, I'll say in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Nope?
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you. So Mark, been there patiently, we're up to you now.
Good evening.
Good issue.
Beaufort County Schools operates three distance learning classrooms in each of the high schools, and these distance learning classrooms are full video, audio and content presentation capable classrooms. We initially installed these classrooms in 2006 and 2007 with the help of USDA rural grant. Back at the beginning of this year, Ms. Oris came and asked if we could submit another grant for another round of upgrades to these classrooms, and we were approved for the grant, and basically what we did is we put out an RFP to upgrade one classroom at each of the high schools, and these classrooms are currently being used to, for Beaufort County Community College classes that are being broadcast. We put out the RFP, we had three vendors come through the walkthrough, we had two vendors submit bids, and what you have before you is the evaluation grid for the two vendors, and it's pretty straightforward. My recommendation, and both these vendors are Polycom authorized installers, which is a type of equipment that we're installing at the high schools, because that's the same equipment that the community college uses, so that'll limit hopefully incompatibility issues. So I'm requesting the board approve SKC Communications for $91,557.69 for the installation of this equipment. The grant through the USDA for every dollar that they spend, we have to spend 78 cents.
Okay.
So we're probably looking at, I have that information in here somewhere, for this particular, we'd be spending about $40,000 out of our capital, technology capitals for this project, and we're receiving reimbursement of about $51,000 from the USDA, which in turn I'd like, of course, to be put back into the technology for each school so we can go ahead and spend that money on the schools again.
But you're not, you're not asking for new money, this would be in the already a lot of technology.
Right, this, when Ms. Oris came before you at the beginning of the year, the request was understood that it was, we would not be getting a full 100% grant, that we would have to put some...
But it's already in your budget.
Yes, sir.
All right. Move approval. Got a motion in a second, any other questions for Mark?
Sorry, dear.
If not, here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Duke has that, RFP.
Let's take that vote again, I didn't hear but one aye over here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to it? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, appreciate all you do.
I was reading, Mr. General Counsel.
Oh, you want me to send, that's okay. No vote is a yes vote around here.
Yes.
Need to have a look at going into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session to prevent the disclosure of privileged information under North Carolina General Statute 115(c-402) and 20 U.S. Code 1232G student records, and under North Carolina General Statute 115(c-319) and 321, which would be personnel records.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, enter into closed session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session.
We already have a motion to come out of closed session. I need a motion for approve the personnel agenda.
So move, ma'am, chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the calendar.
Calendar, we need some work with, are we okay in October?
October 18.
What about it? The next board meeting is the 18th of October, but some of the things we needed to have you take a look at are into the month of November, and primarily the dates that we've got right now are the 1st and the 15th, and the 15th falls right in front of, actually the day before, we need to be in Greensboro the morning for the annual conference. So I was gonna ask if we could move the 15th meeting to the 14th, which will be that Monday? Could we do that?
It's final, I mean, it's final. It's final with everybody, I guess, I'll be gone.
What, now what date is that? Monday at 5:30, because that would be the character ed?
Yeah, that would be the full regular November board meeting.
On the 14th, at 5:30.
Oh, the 14th.
And the reason is that we've gotta be in, the conference in Greensboro starts at 8:00 in the morning, and I hate to have folks on the road that late. And the other is we need to do the school improvement plan presentations by the principals, and I'd like to either do those on the 21st or the 28th of November. And that, now we're gonna have four, we're gonna have four presentations next board meeting, so there'll only be 10, and they're gonna be limited to seven minutes, so we'll be out of here in about an hour and a half.
What date is that?
Either the 21st or 28th or the 22nd. That could be a Monday or Tuesday of the week after the board meeting or the Monday after Thanksgiving.
So do we want it before or after Thanksgiving?
After Thanksgiving, we go after Thanksgiving.
Sure, the 28th, would that work?
28.
Yeah, after Thanksgiving.
So what, we got October 18, November 14, and November 28.
Right.
Is that right?
And November 1st.
Can we, can we start at 1st? Can we start that at 5:00?
All of them at 5:00?
No, no, the 28th will be at 5:00, the regular board meeting is at 5:30.
And then the first one for the Monday is on the 1st.
The what?
The 5:00 one.
It's on November 1st.
You've got something on November 1st?
That's the regular work session for November.
And what time would that be?
5:00.
Okay, I'm gonna have to leave early then.
So the board, the board meetings in November would now be on the 1st, which will be the work session, the 14th at 5:30 would be the November board meeting, and then November 28th would be when the schools come in and do their school improvement presentations. And because I'm gonna have the low performing schools present at the next board meeting, part of that will be their school improvement plan, so you will have heard that, there's no reason to have them repeat.
So there's only three meetings?
Right.
Not four?
And then if we can look...
It's the 1st, the 14th, the 28th.
Right.
First, 14th and 28th. If we can look at December, we normally have a single meeting in December, and we normally, we normally do that with the meal in front of it. Can we look at either the 12th or 13th that month, that, for the month of December? And it doesn't matter, whatever works for you all. That will be the beat of my dear Tuesday.
I might not get reelected.
You can still eat.
December what?
Either the 12th or 13th, the 13th would keep it on a Tuesday.
That might not be reelected.
So this wherein the...
Hey, I'll be around, somewhere in another, I don't know.
Tuesday still is better.
So are we talking about the 12th?
December the 13th, which is Tuesday.
The 13th is on Tuesday.
We normally, we normally...
Just that one meeting in December.
We've been eating afterwards.
Yes.
So we're gonna meet at, what, 5?
We start a little earlier and then meet, start at 5:00 or 4:30, whatever, whatever works.
We're not gonna have any presentations on that day, right? I'm talking about school improvement plans.
They'll start at 5:00?
Dr. Fitz, that, what was, is the 7th, is the 7th of November to, I mean, the week of the 7th, is that too early for me? We haven't one on...
We have one on the 1st.
Okay, we haven't one on the 1st.
And then it's the 14th, which would be the 1st and the 15th, but y'all, well, you're gonna be gone anyway, but they would be gone, so he's moving to Monday, the 14th. And then the 28th is school improvement plans.
If you wanted to move it from there, I'd say look at the week of the 21st, and we don't have anything scheduled there now.
That's the week of Thanksgiving.
That's, that's...
That's Thanksgiving week, but you've got Monday or Tuesday, we could do something.
Okay, could we, could we go to the 21st and the 28th, is that, I mean...
Instead of the 28th?
The reason I'm asking is because I'm, I'm gone on the 14th.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm gone on the 14th.
So, so we would, let me just make sure everybody's on the same page, we would then meet on November the 1st, is that right?
Yeah.
And then we would meet on November the 21st for our November board meeting at 5:30.
Instead of the 14th?
Right. And then keep the 28th for school improvement plans.
Mm-hmm.
And then December 13th would be our December meeting. Now, last year we met at 4:00 and then had the meal after.
Okay, 4:00.
Will that work?
Yeah, and we can, we can...
We can adjust that time.
Adjust that at our last meeting depending on how much information you might have.
Ma'am?
Yep. So we just change the 14th to the 21st.
We got it.
And Lisa, you'll send this on back.
Yeah, we'll send this.
She can send it out. I'm not writing it down.
Good.
Okay, are we straight on the calendar then?
Yeah.
All right, move on to board member updates, any board members have any updates to share?
We met yesterday with the Ag Expo, it'll be here before you know it, November 3rd, and so, anyway, it looks like everything's starting to fall into place, thanks to the staff here at Central Office, all their hard work, and also, everything's coming together.
And Mr. Hodges, that is still gonna be in Williamson?
At, by Martin Center.
On November 3rd?
We'd expand it November 3rd.
Good luck for y'all to come and just see what we do.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to make it.